Review of an old and new business.
Yeah, that's the planner's report.
Okay, give us the planner's report.
All right, so we're getting ready for town meeting. We're gonna be holding the public hearing on October 14th. And just to go through what we think the final articles would be, would be, one would be outdoor dining provisions to allow flexibility on a more permanent basis. Two is gonna be to amend the accessory apartments provision. Three is to add a site plan waiver for the Foxborough Center overlay district. And those are only for uses that are, you know, in existing buildings with no changes to the outside of the site. Four is to amend the building height provisions slash delete stories. That's not to change any numbers, but rather the stories is in conflict, so we're trying to get to a straight height provision. Five is to define habitable floor area. Six is to amend the brew pub definition to include distilling of wine and spirits. Seven is to accept Othalat Way and Peterson Lane. And then last is a street acceptance for a portion of Garrett Spillane Road. So, that's a lot, busy at AdCom through the next few weeks, I would imagine, months. So, stay tuned, we'll be having that public hearing next month. What's been dominating most of my time lately is the RFP for the Walnut Street project that we're submitting that or putting that out to bid on September 27th. There's a tremendous amount of legwork legally that's required. In fact, we were supposed to issue it in early September. Fortunately, we now have a procurement specialist here in town assisting us, and she was able to advise me that we have to advertise in the central register thirty days, I think it's thirty days in advance, so that's kinda where this name, this date, we're holding this date, because we got it in last month. We had to do things like advertise in the newspaper, we had to have it on the website by a certain period of time, so there's so many legal requirements. I'm working with town council right now on getting the contracts and other forms set, and then the housing authority's gonna be reviewing the RFP sometime in mid-September, so that's, oh gosh, that's only next week. And vote, most likely vote to issue it. And so, so that's been the bulk of my work lately, it's a lot, it's not something I've ever done. I'm a little bit out of my league, but, you know, we'll figure it out. So, and then on the 119 Moore Street, 40B, that discussion continues Tuesday night at the selectmen. So, I'll be attending that meeting, and Gabby and Kevin attended the site walk with the selectmen on August 30th, and I believe that was rather uneventful, but it was just helpful to see the site and to have, you know, visualization of the situation out there. Local Rapid Recovery Grant, that's something that I've been working with a lot with the Beta Consulting Group, and final report is due at the end of the month. And actually, I wrote this yesterday, and then today, while I was coming back from Boston, I had to have a call with the 495 Partnership. I sit on their board, and they serve, well, they serve a bunch of towns and cities in our 495 region. We just found out that there's some program called the Redo Program, it's a state funding mechanism. So, that's, the 495 Partnership gets about $115,000 a year through the Redo Grant. And I've always heard about it through that, because I sit on that board. Well, all of a sudden, apparently this year, the Redo Grant was funded for $6 million. And so, now, as of last night at 7:00 PM, the Rapid Recovery Grant Program that I'm, we're working on has now, the funding source is this Redo Grant. But the problem is, is the Redo Grants are due September 30th, and, you know, we're not even there yet, we didn't know this, you know, and I'm, I'm trying to get a grant, I mean, an RFP out on September 27th, so it's kind of, we're all kinda freaking out. Also, any project we got funded for would have to be completed by June 30th, so again, I'm just looking at workload and whatnot, so we're gonna go for it, but it's just, we're all freaking out, because we just found out today that there's a funding source that we're gonna have to jump through some hoops on, and we'll figure it out. And then, and then this kinda ties into the last thing, because the Mass Gaming Commissional, Commission Regional Tourism Effort we've been working on, that's continuing, the website is almost fully completed. We also realize that the planners can't be the ones to run this. I'm, I'm the worst at marketing, I can't run a website, trying to come up with content and graphics, it's just not in my wheelhouse. No, obviously, no town's gonna be hiring staff to do that, so we've been looking at, trying to get some funding for that, and there's a huge tourism grant out there, so I just need to get time to write that. I'm working with Rent Them and Plainville, and I'm trying to get them to help out as well. So, that's something we were also thinking that, as we talk about the local rapid recovery work, and we talk about this tourism stuff, it's all kinda related, it's all economic development, it's all just like, you need like, somebody's time to just do this, and I would love to do it all, in fact, I'd give the housing up, stuff up to anybody else, and I'd do this fun stuff, but that's not how it's gonna work, I don't think. So, we were hoping for funding for, like, maybe a consultant or a position for like 20 hours a week, but this redo thing doesn't look like that, and so we are kind of all just waiting to see what's gonna happen, but stay tuned, because we are trying to continue the economic development and recovery efforts, and, you know, continue to work on Uptown, which I think is coming a long way, you know, we have some, Foxmo nutrition is still working on their project, and we've heard there might be a, a new business opening up in the future, so, in the old Barrow space, so we're excited about that. So, Todson, I believe, is being sold, and that's actually gonna turn into a bank, as far as we know.
Oh, okay.
Todson, the old post office.
Yep.
Which was a bank.
Which was a bank.
Yeah. I, I kinda said, "Come on, a bank?", you know, but they, listen, banks are important too, it's just not, you know, as exciting for me, as an economic, I don't, they didn't say. But, so, anyway, and Shovel Town is, and Doug King are continuing on their efforts. Still no word on when the demo's gonna happen, but I know they've been plugging away. Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Did you get to see it?
No, I, I just wanna see the funeral home going.
Can you call us when those things happen?
Yeah, it was pretty quick.
Was it? Okay. Can you be our eyes and ears on this? We gotta get over there and watch it.
Well, get over here now.
Breaking news! Okay, so that means maybe they're getting close to, you know, the funeral home and the 15 to 17 Market Street, so those will be the ones that we all wanna watch.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Great. Do we have anything in that group subdivisions, Gabby?
No, the, the only thing I have is London Estates is submitting the first phase for street acceptance as a town meeting.
Okay.
And also, a portion of Garrett Spillane Road is also being submitted for acceptance.
So, none of that has been submitted in all those years on Garrett Spillane?
No.
Really?
No. But it has been, it has been built, you know, with inspections and according to, you know, subdivision standards, it shows it's never been submitted for acceptance.
Okay. Being a little past 7:05, action items, minutes?
I, I just, the English major, me fixed a couple times. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from July 22nd and August 12th as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I think you can go.
I was gonna say, can we start? Okay, the next item on the agenda is associate, excuse me, new associate planning board member applicant, Tom Murphy. Tom, could you come forward?
So, we invited Tom here, maybe it was my idea to, because I work with Tom on the EDC, and he's an active member, always willing to dig in, seems to have an interest, so, we all know John tried to retire from, as the associate, and I think he actually, because of COVID, got automatically reappointed, just in like a blanket set of appointments. But he really does wanna retire, so rather than continue, continuing to force him to be a figurehead there, I reached out to Tom, and I think it was mentioned at an earlier meeting, we haven't really heard from anybody else, so, the process is that I think you all, the planning board makes its kind of a decision, and then it goes to a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. But typically, it's, you know, the way it works in a lot of boards, I think they defer to the board to kinda bring forward their recommendations, so, I'll leave it to you guys to chat, but, sort of the background.
Anybody have any questions for Tom at this time?
No, I know him, and I know his work on the EDC.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about your background, or how you'd be an answer to us.
Sure, okay, so, I'll just talk a little bit about my background and how I got here. So, I've been in Foxborough for about 30 years, about 22 on Bicknell Street. My kids are now just graduated, my daughter just graduated high school this year, so just brought it to URI, and my son's at Wentworth at doing construction management and real estate development, so I have a little more time on my hands, just me and my dog at home. I have a architectural degree, I have a MBA, and I also have a degree in real estate management. I also have a mass real estate license. I, I'm a facilities director for a financial firm based out of Massachusetts, and I handle the Americas, so Canada, the Americas, the Americas, the US and South America, doing facilities work, space planning, design, construction, and real estate. For this position, I've been with, working with Paige now since the reinception of the economic development, so it's been a few years. So, I got interested in this, in the field, in the, in just learning from Paige and the group, and what we've done in the past, especially with the, the train station, I mean, the, the fire station. So, it's kind of opened my eyes, and I thought this was a good position just to learn more, because it's more of a silent position, correct? So, just, just to understand what's going on and to feed when I can, you know, help out when I can.
We all have vacations stacked.
You're looking at two former alternates over there.
Three.
All three, all right.
Four.
You're all, also, it's a real recruitment.
See that you get sucked in.
With the statement that it's kind of a silent position, maybe Paige, you could take a moment and just review that, the responsibilities and the role of the alternate, because when I came on, for months, it was still somewhat ambiguous, I thought.
Right, so an associate position is actually mentioned in Master General Law, I should have it in front of me, but basically, it is really only for special permit applications. When the board doesn't have a full, you know, full board, then the chairman can assign the associate position to act on special permits, since it's a super majority requirement. So, traditionally, in this board, it seems like the associate member participates in discussions and actively participates, just would only vote in the instance that you were activated for a special permit.
Okay. Just a little bit about myself too, as far as how I feel about things, I'm a conservative, you know, as nature conservative, but I'm also open to change, I like change too, so it's kind of a happy medium for me. And I have to see that in my work professionally, you know, too, so we can move in the future, you know, so I have to make sure you can, but, you know, I know about the quaint piece, you know, the nice piece, you wanna keep the town, but they're still looking for, you know, the economic development down the road and how you get there, so, it's kinda how I look at things.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I've talked to Paige a bunch of times, and I think we talked about this a few years ago too.
Yeah.
And I always just got too much on my plate, but, no, because I've been on boards in the town too, I was on the Partners in Patriotism Board for a few years, I'm on the Personal Best Charities, they have a school here in Foxborough, so I'm on that board. So, I have more time now, so I thought this would be, and I'm still on the Economic Development Committee.
Well, I think you're grossly overqualified, but we'd be happy to have you.
Great, I appreciate that.
Does anybody on the board have any, I get a comment, so?
You wanna take any sort of action?
Yep.
Just on a recommendation, maybe?
So, I'd make a recommendation that we, we recommend to the Board of Selectmen that Tom Murphy become a associate member.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to having you sitting up here with us.
Good luck with your emptiness.
Thanks. Two minutes to go.
But I haven't had normal heart rate.
That's because Gary's sitting next to you.
What are you doing?
Am I sitting too close? Is that why, am I sitting too close?
You're sitting too close.
That's exactly what I said.
I'm between two very handsome intelligent men, successful.
Okay, we need Mr. Buckley in here.
Mr. Buckley?
Okay, being approximately 7:15 PM, continued public hearing, definitive subdivision Orchard Place, Mill Street Preserve Limited Partnership, Mr. Buckley?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name's Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and with me is Mr. Lynch, who is Principal of Mill Street Preserve, and Jeff Lovely, who is Project Attorney. After we left our last meeting, what we did is we went back to our drawing boards and came up with a design which requires waivers from the applica, strict application of the subdivision regulations. And I know you have it in front of you, and I've, I'm putting it up right here on the screen, it actually looks good tonight. And, so, I'm just gonna kinda summarize my, my cover letter, that, so, what this does is, this, would, it just depicts a hammerhead cul-de-sac, so, and so what, you know, the subdivision, typical subdivision regulations require a circular cul-de-sac, but the board in the past has considered a hammerhead cul-de-sac for these type of small lot subdivisions. So, this would be a hammerhead cul-de-sac, and I know it's a little bit hot here, but this is the layout. This is the layout here, I don't know where my finger is.
Can you make it a little bigger, Bill?
Again.
Please.
So, I'm gonna make it a little smaller. So, this is the, the lot, so you can, this is, the red is the lot, so this would be the roadway itself, this hammerhead here, you can see it's kind of an L shape, and that's why we call it a hammerhead, and it goes, this is the turnaround, so you'd come in, you'd pull in, back out, pull out, instead of a, an 84-foot diameter cul-de-sac, which is what we had before. And then you'll see over here, in this little corner, we created what's called Parcel B. It's about 920 square feet, it's a non-buildable, non-conforming lot, and we put it there so that we could move this shed, this shed that's currently right here, we could relocate it over to this area, and I'm showing it there, but it could be moved closer to the house or further away, whatever, it just needs to be five feet off this rear property line. And the, and in addition, what we're showing on here is, if you remember, there's by, by the condo documents, there are two parking spaces here at the end of the street, but our neighbors said that they park four there sometimes, so what we show is four parking spaces in this area here, and what those would be done, we would be, we would convey to the owners of six, six and eight Orchard Place, the duplex there, the right pass and repass over that and to park on there, because a portion of that, these parking spaces is within the roadway layout, so they'd be able to access it, and they'd be able to park in there. So, that would be one of the things, and then, of course, this Parcel B would be conveyed to the owners of six and eight, so they could combine that with their property, it wouldn't be a standalone lot, so that would be combined with the six and eight. Lot 1B in the back here, so what this is, is this is about a 7,200 square foot lot, and what that is, is that's the rest, that is the, all of the land that is currently owned by Mill Street Preserve, that lies within the Baker Street Historic District. All of that land would be put into that Lot 1B and conveyed to Mr. Hunt, who's the owner, the new owner of 18 Baker Street. So, that would mean that all of the land in, in the, that was part of, that was in the Baker Street Historic District would be part of 18 Baker Street, and that would, again, would be conveyed. In addition to that, along the line there, between the two new lots, we would build a six-foot-high stockade fence, which is what Mr. Lynch has reported to me, was the agreement between him and Mr. Hunt when that land was purchased. We would also up here on the right, one of the waivers we're requesting is to not plant street trees. Typically, the board grants that for these smaller ones, but wants to see them planted somewhere. So, what we're proposing is, is along this northwest property line, in this area here, is the construction, or not the construction, the planting of, we call them a six-foot-high eastern arbrevides, six feet apart, which, we picked that because under the subdivision regs, if you're doing screening between a commercial use and a residential use, the regu, the zoning regulations, I'm sorry, call for six-foot-high plantings, six feet on center. So, this is between residential and residential, but it still provides a substantial screening along that property line, which is actually a stone wall. The work on Orchard Street, Orchard Place, I'm sorry, remains the same, there's no change from the original design that we showed you. The light gray is the pavement that's there, kind of in tough shape, that would be reclaimed and repaved, and then the heavier gray is what would be constructed, or what I would call full-depth reconstruction, basically a whole new road in that heavy gray area, and that would be constructed so that the roadway itself would be at least 18 feet wide, which is what, again, the fire department found to be adequate access. And also on the plan, it shows that the fire department wanted to make sure that the trees along the right side, which we're going to try and save, there's a decent number of trees along there, they, they wanted to make sure those got limbed, because I guess some of them, the limbs are relatively low, so they wanted them to get limbed, so that they're upper asking it back there, so we, of course, we said yes to that. The only thing we've added there is we added a riprap swale on the south side, which is the bottom, as you're looking at it, again, very similar to other smaller roadways or driveways that have been built, and what that does is that just captures the runoff, infiltrates it into the ground, instead of it all running out onto Main Street. And if you recall, the town engineer had a comment on that, that he didn't mind it running out on Main Street, because it's so minimal, but he thought that something like this would be a good option. The town, the other thing that Mr. Lynch has agreed to do is he, at the last meeting, he require, agreed to require the new homes, at the new home or homes, if it's a duplex on this lot, to responsible for maintenance of Orchard Place from Main Street to the end of the new roadway, and that would be written in the condo documents, so that would be, be no question that anybody buying those lots has to maintain that, that roadway. So, let me just, I'm gonna zip over here, I think, where am I? Let me get out. No, maybe not. So, let, let me just go over the waivers that we're asking for, that is, it sounds like there's a lot in there are, but these are, again, typical waivers that we've asked for in the past on similar projects. The first one is the street width is 40 feet, where 50 feet is required, and when we're talking about the street width, we're just talking about the layout. So, you can see the 40 feet here, unless, 40 feet, and there's plenty of room for the 18-foot roadway. 18-foot wide pavement where 20 feet is required. We're gonna, asking to waive the requirement that a cul-de-sac be constructed, and construct a hammerhead, we're asking to waive the requirement for curbing. Again, there's no curbing now on Orchard Place, this would not be curbed as well, it would, you know, this would be a larger driveway. Waive the requirement for a sidewalk, again, there's no sidewalk on Orchard Place. Waive the requirement for streetlights, and allow screening trees, which is what I discussed earlier, in lieu of street trees, and to have them placed along the property line as a buffer. So, I think that lays out the modifications that we've, we're asking for, and again, it's, my opinion anyways, that, that they're reasonable based on the, you know, the size and configuration of the lot, and the fact that we're only talking about one additional lot on this roadway.
Thank you. I see some very marked improvements in here, I'm sure there's some questions and comments from the board.
Definite improvement. Question, the four parking spaces that are being added, what is your thinking about how to prevent folks from the new dwellings from parking there or not parking there, to ensure that those four are for the folks at six and eight?
I would, I would just add on to that, because part of those are in the layout, is it possible legally to dedicate them? I assume that's the intent.
Yeah, they would receive, I guess Parcel B would be deeded to them, and then they would have an easement, so the owners would receive an easement for access, and then in the deed of the condo common areas to the condo owners, it would clearly specify that that's an exclusive use area for the butter, and that they can't park there or block it.
I think somehow there should be addressed, because we, when we just did the beer garden or the pop-up, there, if people on Shea Lane were very concerned about parking, and there was no ramifications, like the cops could not tow, they could not ticket, so I think there needs to be something tighter, if there, if something's available, or you're gonna have neighbor against neighbor, and the police don't have any ability to get involved to solve it, nor do I think any of us want that. So, I appreciate, you know, you know, you can tell people, "Don't park there", but I, based on where it's located, I have concerns about that.
Right, well.
And you can't control people, I get it, but there needs to be some sort of, you know.
Like a sign?
A signage, and, you know, it, even if it says, you know, if this is okay with six to eight, I don't know if six to eight's represented here tonight, but, that, and they'll be towed and stored at the owner's expense or something, you know, whoever, the vehicle, and then, I just wanted to confirm, I know the woman who lives at six-dash-eight spoke very passionately and very well at the last meeting. Mr. Lynch, did you meet with her and discuss the movement of the shed and these four parking spaces?
I'd met with them before the previous meeting, both the owners of six and eight, sort of explaining the process, and this was back in April, early May, just explaining that that was my intent to move the shed, if we were moving down this path, that it would be to relocate the shed and the parking spaces in this location. I think at the time I said two, but we talked after the last meeting, and four seemed like it could work. So, I think that that, this matches what I had talked to them about.
Okay, have they, have they seen this though, and responded to it?
Not till tonight, no. I mean, they, they saw something that had two, not four.
Okay.
And I gave that to them as a potential, you know, last spring.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if I may, Joe, if it were to be brought back to two spots, could you have them running parallel with Orchard Place and giving them an access to pull in that way, and that would minimize or prevent any potential use by the condo owners?
Yeah, it's no problem.
That could be an option then, right?
Yeah.
Gary?
I'm good right now, I think we've discussed this to death.
Jeff?
Probably right, Gary. No.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I appreciate all the changes you've made, so, I just understand what I meant.
Yeah.
That being said, I will open it up to the butters, I will caution you though, that if you've spoken about this in previous meetings, let's not revisit what we've already revisited. If there's anything new to add or comment on, on tonight's presentation, be more than happy to hear that. We just ask that you come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Won't be able to get in and out. Need a passer?
No, you can just come on. You get the podium.
Yeah, it's not a bad news. Good evening, I'm Aidan Calcoyne at the president right here. I mean, I think, as Gary had said already, you've talked about this a lot, but, you know, from my concern, and I guess, we have very little say, from what I've understood so far, it's up to your discretion, but from, from my perspective, this is a, you know, it is a big it is a big change, or it's going to be a big change for us, and it's a big intrusion on our privacy in our backyard. So, I guess what I would like to understand is, with the parcel being broken up to begin with, who was responsible for the maintenance of the screening that you're planning on putting in place there?
The owners.
Okay, so now you know, you have multiple owners on the-
Two.
Three owners.
No, there's only two.
But this parcel is going to belong to the new person, correct?
Just the parking spots.
Well, no, actually-
You're right, you're right.
Some of the trees.
So based on, if we, if we reconfigure the spaces, we could change that around, so that the condo possibly retains that strip where the trees are?
It's just that, I mean, again, it's, you know, it's three neighbors, very close, there'll be four neighbors, including us, and that, that privacy fence or that screen that you're proposing is, you know, that's important as to be maintained, okay? And then within that, I mean, it looks like, I think it was six-foot arborvitae, or something, was that what the plan was for that?
That's correct. Yes, he was talking six-foot arborvitae.
Okay, so when you're, I mean, I know you've heard about this a lot, but six-foot arborvitae against a multi-story building that's, you know, closer to the property line nearly than the back of my house, it's, I don't think really, six-foot arborvitae starting off, it really offers what you would call privacy, and I'd just be interested to hear, I know you guys have a lot of experience in this, what other options that you could put in place at this point, at this point right now, if there's anything else available beyond six-foot.
Six-foot arborvitae in five years are gonna be twelve to fifteen foot.
They grow a foot and a half a year, that's why the arborvitae's are good, yeah, it's wonderful to have perfect screening on day one, but it's not-
And there's no fence that, A, there's no fence that would go higher than the trees will end up being, and they'll end up being much higher, to your point.
Anything over six-foot, you need a permit for it.
Very quickly, and-
You're in the business of doing that, I'm sure, at some point here. You could work on that.
The building commissioner.
Something has to go to that.
Yeah, yeah, we don't approve that, but, and then, you don't wanna plant a tree that's bigger than six feet, because it's got the best chance of survival to embed and grow.
An option is this would be, if you're concerned about neighbors not maintaining
the fence, we would build, we could put the fence, we could put the trees on his property. And he could be responsible for taking care of his own things, if you want to do it that way. If you're worried about neighbors not maintaining, not that you have to really do much maintenance for arborvitae, but-
Well, if I can speak to that, I mean, I have no problem taking care of the trees. I think just that piece of property that the trees are on, I'd be happy to take possession of that and look after the trees myself, if that's, if it's down to a maintenance issue.
I don't think that's what he was suggesting, put those across the property line under your property.
Right.
Which is a little different thing.
Maintaining them.
Just, just, just a touch different, but again, as I said, from a maintenance perspective, if there're gonna be trees there, it's a few feet, either way, again, I'm not looking to reduce the size of the property, like, so, again, I'd be interested to hear some discussion around that.
Well, the only way to do that, and have you have responsibility, is for them to sit on your property, so I guess-
That's why I'm saying, so give me the property under the trees, if that's going to be the solution, like, you know, if we're divvying it up.
That's not acceptable.
You can't do that. It, this lot's been sold. You can't parcel off that piece.
We're gonna give, the land is gonna go to parcel B, we'll be going to six and eight.
Yep.
And we can't split it up anymore because of setback requirements for that shed, so it has to be at least five feet off.
Yeah, if you want, my personal opinion, these trees are gonna go, arborvitae's do not require a lot of maintenance, and they're gonna grow quickly. I personally, well, I wouldn't want them infringing if I were you on my, my property. There's no, if you're, if the maintenance is your concern, let them sit on their property.
With respect, it's not really the, it's not the, the privacy is really my concern, whether that, we call it arborvitae's or fence or water, whatever, it's, privacy is the concern, I mean, I really don't mind what it is, you know? And so, if we talk about privacy, it needs a certain amount of maintenance to remain that way, and with multiple individuals involved, and not knowing who those might be yet, it would just be, to preserve the privacy, it would be nice to get that ruled out at this point, like, you know?
Could there be a landscape easement or something created there, so that no one could cut the trees down, and then could we do something like we've done in the past, where there's a guarantee, like on Summer Street we did, where the trees had to live, like, at least two or three years, and there was like a guarantee, something like that, so then that way-
If for some reason-
No one's allowed to, like, well, I guess, so six to eight would have to agree to it with the transfer of the property, that would, and then, the condo association would have to, or people would have to agree to it with the transfer to them, so then it would be a matter of all the parties would kinda, right? Am I correct on that? So then that way, nobody could go cut down the trees, and then if there's a guarantee that they'll survive a couple of years, and once they survive a couple of years, they're, you know-
You're fine.
They're pretty much it, so.
That, those two things, if they, it can be done, would address the privacy.
I can say, I have twenty-three arborvitae's along the back of my pool, and I planted them in, like, I don't know, I moved into my house in ninety-five, so I think I planted them in ninety-seven, and right now, I'm literally looking at them towering over my six-foot chain link fence, and I'm like, I don't know what to do with those things right now, because I'm afraid one's gonna like tip over or die eventually, because they're so big, so, they really are a wall right now.
I don't doubt the ability of the arborvitae's, I just, again, we're just trying to have a plan now, so, you know, you discussed disputes over parking, you know, this would be an area that, if we're looking at privacy and how that is going to evolve and be preserved, just have that discussion now, that was really it, and you guys have the authority or the ability to discuss that and come up with a-
Well, I think things are being presented to you, there's a fixed fence, that's six feet, it will never grow, can't go taller than six feet, so that's what you're gonna, that's your, that's your guaranteed solid barrier, they're offering that. If you go the arborvitae's, it's six feet to start, you know, on center, so there might be a little gap to start, and then, or I don't know, do you stagger them, or how does that work?
In this particular case, we would just put them in a line.
Okay, so there would be gaps to start?
Yes.
Six feet on center, so.
Because they have to grow out, if you put them too close, they'll die.
What if you do the staggered?
There's not a lot of room, it could in some of the areas. One of the things I, I would like to offer, based on the discussion, is, to short-circuit this, is, well, you could put a condition in there, as you just mentioned, which you did on other projects, is that there'll be a financial surety posted for it, and they'll be required to be lived for two years of growing, before you would release the financial surety. And if, and they typically would live, usually they die the first year, street trees and stuff die, they either die or they don't.
Yep.
So, you'll have two years of growing, that's standard, and actually, the Conservation Commission, I know it's not you guys, but in their regulations, is two growing seasons.
Yep.
And then at that point, they believe it's, things are viable.
What that means, a financial surety, is we'd hold some of the developer's money, so if those trees did die, that money would, could be used, if needed, to, if Mr. Lynch didn't pay for them to be replaced, we would use that money to pay for them.
Okay, I mean, they were my comments on the privacy, and that's all I had to add. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
What we can do, if parcel B is conveyed to six and eight Orchard, is with regard to the strip where the trees are, we can reserve an easement and the obligation to maintain them, that would still remain with the condo. So that way, we would have an assurance of maintenance.
Okay, good, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Please come up, give your name and address.
Kathy Hickey, I'm at fourteen Baker Street, I'm not in a butter, I'm next to this property.
Yes.
But my concern is, there's a tree line here, and here's the septic going in. I don't want any of that tree line taken down, and there's also a stone wall that's been there before any of us were around. I, I don't want any of that taken down. If that tree line's taken down, from two yards away, all I'm gonna see is a big townhouse.
Mr. Buckley?
Well, we certainly won't touch the wall, because the wall is the property line. As far as trees, I can't guarantee, septic systems are typically ten feet off the property line, so we'll be digging ten feet off the property line with the system. But, you know, it's not like it's a straight line, you typically go outside of it, so, can't guarantee that whatever trees are there would live or will stay down. You know, we'll, we'll be at least ten feet off the property line with the system.
But that's gonna take a huge, make a huge impact on the neighborhood. Right now, I can't even see that property. I, you know, right here, beyond this tree line, it's all green, it's beautiful, and I see all these trees. When that goes in, all I'm gonna see is the big townhouse.
Who owns those trees?
Part of it is on, part of it is on sixteen Baker, part of it is on eighteen Baker.
Well, he can't touch anything on-
Sixteen.
On the Baker parcel.
I, I don't remember, there's one big tree out there, that's unfortunately gonna go.
Yeah, that's the-
But there's no, I mean, I remember, I mean, we dug the test pits over there, and there's not a lot of, it's not like it's heavy dense tree growth in that area there, it's mostly kinda light scrubby stuff on our side. There might be some trees against the, the wall, but-
It might be scrubby stuff, but it's, it's a barrier, and it's, that's what we wanna keep.
But, and I, well, we appreciate that, he can't touch anything that's on other people's property, but if it's on their property, they have the right to do with it, as you have the right to do with what's on your property. I know it's not what you wanna hear, but we don't have any control over that.
I could actually move the system, I can, I can make it at least thirteen feet away, because there's a reserve area, so I can make sure that the septic is on the inside, and not on the outside, so, it could be, you know, the system, I can make sure it's designed so it's thirteen feet away. That will give us more room, hopefully not damage any roots on whatever trees are on our side.
I think that's fair.
What about arborvitae's along that side?
Yeah, for what he's taken down.
Do you wanna really plant that close to a septic field? I can see potential damage to the septic over here.
I can, yeah, with the roots. I think it'd be too close.
Know enough about the root system of that, but-
Creating gaps.
I think it's a fair quest for the neighborhood, you know?
I think that-
While we're dealing with concessions.
There's not many trees there.
Bill?
I'm sorry.
I didn't-
Arborvitae's, you know, I think you're right, we would prefer not to plant them that close to a septic system.
Fence?
I don't think I've-
I don't wanna look at a fence either.
Well, the question is, arborvitae's, if you have a choice, arborvitae's or a fence?
Well, I would prefer the arborvitae's.
Well-
But it sounds like whatever, because the septic system is so close, whatever's there isn't gonna make it, it's already there.
Well, he's, he's moving it ten to thirteen, which is gonna help. And then, he, I think I just heard you say, Bill, that, you know, there might be one tree that ends up going, but, you know, I don't also think it's fair to put trees up there that ultimately are gonna impact and, and ruin this new septic system in an attempt to, to do that. I think it's a fine balance.
And those roots are shallow, too, you know, they're, they're shallow roots, so they, they go out, they don't go down like an oak tree or something like that.
Well, could you, instead of an arborvitae's, could you put something where the root goes down?
You could put trees like that, but then they don't, you don't, they don't screen, you know, the complaint is the screening, you know?
It grows, the canopy grows up, and you have a big trunk. Oaks don't have low vegetation.
Yep.
What about a berm, something like, you know, you see septic systems that go, what if you do something, raise the grade a little bit?
So do a berm, you know, but, you know, you talk about a berm, so for every foot, for every foot you wanna go up, you have to go two or three feet over. So if you wanna put a three-foot berm, it's like a triangle, that's six to nine, plus six to nine, so it's twelve to eighteen feet of taking up the yard to plant something that is three feet high. So it's, you know, berms are good if you have a lot of space, which you don't have a lot of space here.
I'd be fine with move it in thirteen, and do the best to minimize the removal of trees. That's where my heads are.
Why don't we say, why don't we say that we'll replace any trees with some type of screening shrub? Any tree over, let's be reasonable, like any tree over like four inches.
Okay.
Something like that, which I don't think there's many at all out there. So we can replace some trees along there than that.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
Anyone else with comments? Please come forward. State your name and address, please, sir.
Foster, nine Bentwood Street. I'd like to, to focus on the northeast corner of the property, since that's where, you know, that's the abutter for mine. The fact that there are no arborvitae's there, I take it to mean that this is gonna be left as natural, left as is, this corner?
Yes, and I should've mentioned that, if you look at the plan, you kinda zoom, zoom in on it a little bit here. There's some vegetation in there, it's not like it's great stuff, but there are some big bushes in that area. So what we thought is, that we would minimize the grading in that area, and that's why I wrote approximate limited clearing, and leave that vacant, and then provide natural screening in that, that area. So you can see how the trees are all through here, well, actually here, they go out and around, but, so in this area here, in order to build the roadway, driveway, and grading, we'd have to clear at least that much, which would leave the rest of this as natural.
Okay, that's, that's good, but now, you know, then I have the same question that Mr. Kilkoyne did about the, the maintenance, or the lack of maintenance, in this case for that, that corner. So what's the, you know, who's gonna prevent, or what is gonna prevent the new owners from putting, you know, a shed out there, or clearing it, or whatever in the future? There are no, yeah, you're not planting arborvitae's, which is fine, I get that.
Okay, I have a question for you. If that's a concern, because they do have a right to put a shed there, it's their, their property, would you want them to clear it, just throwing this out there, and put arborvitae, arborvitae's down that let, so if they do put a shed there in the future, because there's no control, we, you can't, we can't prohibit that, but take it down to the-
I guess what I'm saying is that, that leaving this natural is the preference. I'd rather it be left the way it is. However, you know, there has to be some, if they do clear it, and put in something there because they can, then, you know-
This is our chance to do, at that point, there's, there's no, there's nothing that can be done. You'd have to work with your neighbors to come to some sort of mutual agreement. Your opportunity to get the arborvitae's as part of the condition of a potential permit is now, as we listen to this.
I liked your, we just discussed it, and I liked your idea of, if you put a condition, Jeff could put it in the, in the docks, and then you can make it a condition that if anything, if that area was cleared, then, then the owners would have to plant screening.
Could we do, we could do that as a future condition?
We could extend what we have out there. If, if there was work to be done, if there was a shed or whatever, in that corner.
But you don't, but you wouldn't have owned it, you won't own it.
He'll pass it on as a condition.
This would be a condition for the future of it.
It'll have to be sort of a restrictive covenant in the deed.
But it's doable?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna have to cover around that entire corner, right? Because, you know, the Calahers have exactly the same concern.
So we can do it in the future, we can do it as a-
Stockade fence.
Right, there's already a stockade fence.
No, there is not.
No, 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 no.
The stockade fence is here.
It's right there.
I get that, that we're talking about this, this corner.
Yeah, okay, so I was incorrect, I apologize, we can do it as a covenant, that if they do, do something, they're required to, the owners of the condo would be required to plant arborvitae's.
Okay. Is there anywhere else that would care to speak?
Hi, I'm Maureen Kraus, and I live on nine Baker Street, so I'm not in a butter, but I am a homeowner in the historic district and in this neighborhood. And when I look at this plan, and the footprint of the building, and the amount of pavement, it's in a different scale to everything that's around it. And, you know, you, they've made their pitch, and we've talked about the cul-de-sac and all of that, but I would just ask you, as the planning board, to be thoughtful about these projects, because if these variances are allowed, and granted- because if these variances are allowed and granted, you're just gonna see more of this type of construction that's in a different scale to what's around it. And that's gonna be our town. And from my house, um, if I draw a circle within a half-mile radius, there's a lot of this construction that has come up in the last couple of years. You know, so I'm just saying, you know, you're the planning board and that's what we're gonna have.
Well, and, and I appreciate you sharing that with us, that the quandary or the situation that we're in is by right. They could do this and build a full cul-de-sac and.
Right, I think, you know, with that, there, you know, there've been a lot of discussions in these meetings and outside of these meetings about, you know, the property line and the septic and the, what's the structure and all of those things. So there have been some discussions. And, you know, ultimately, you are the planning board and you're granting, you know, it's, it's up to you to, uh.
But I'm trying to share with you that if we don't grant this permit by right, without any say of this planning board, Mr. Lynch can do the road and do a huge cul-de-sac. We have no, we cannot stop it. He has that, that oper, that, he has that right to do that. It's called a by right. So we can either work with them to put arborvitae's in and move the shed and do the parking spaces for six and eight, or they can go head by right and do something that's even a bigger scale than you're seeing here.
Okay, so maybe it's then, it's a bigger comment. And it's, it maybe for this type of construction, I know it's been called a subdivision. I don't really call it a subdivision, it's putting, um, you know, two houses on one lot. I mean, maybe that's something that the town needs to look at. Maybe that needs different setbacks than are required now. I mean, it's just, I, I'm just saying, like, look around town. If this is what you wanna see, like, how many of these do you wanna see in the next ten years?
I completely understand, but that would be a zoning change. That's not within our purview, ma'am. I, I, I don't want you to think that what you're saying is falling on deaf ears, but what you're asking us for, that would be a rezoning. We don't, there's a zoning board for that. And this would be allowed by right, the big one. So that's, we can only make a decision based on the options available to us. And unfortunately, we're kind of a bit in the quandary.
But to, to truly answer her comment, Tracy, uh, this board has worked long and hard for many, many years, Maureen, with many of the developers in this community to try to minimize impact. We cannot stop the progress. If you own a piece of land and you have the right to develop it, we make sure that it fits the criteria that is in place at the time in the town.
Right, and I, I think if this was a single-family house, you wouldn't have seen the objection that, you know, we've seen in the last however many meetings. You know, there'd be a different scale to the building, a different amount of pavement. You know, so it's, it's just something to just keep in mind, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Patricia Selby. Um, I am actually speaking on behalf of the Historic District Commission, not as an abutter, although I do live at thirteen Baker and can see all of this. Surprisingly, we can all see each other quite well because we have very big, open yards. Um, and I, I absolutely feel for what Mrs. Kraus is saying. I'm completely in agreement that this is a very difficult situation. What we are not in agreement on, and I believe Paige had a conversation with Mr. Costello today, yes. We spent an hour, Mr. Barrett, our architect, who really understands your drawings way better than I do, uh, and I, with Mr. Costello, going over the fact that somehow, when you all asked your questions to him rightfully, can we do this, can we do that? What does this mean, what does that mean? And he answered, no one ever mentioned to him, when you said they want to do a by-right subdivision under the subdivision by, under the subdivision control laws. No one ever told him this existing fountain was there and that the road that would be built over it would cover a structure subject to the historic district.
What structure is it covering?
This fountain.
The road is covering the fountain?
Yes, their subdivision, if they popped up, their subdivision goes right on top of the fountain. As a matter of fact, five feet of almond seed is what Bill calls it, goes right over top of the fountain. There is no way for them to do an as-right construction with a roadway without covering something in the historic district. The irony there is that it puts our two portions, your board and our commission, at odds with each other because you're stuck saying, well, are they asking for this as of right? And, and they didn't actually, they didn't submit approval not required. What they submitted was a definitive plan. Those are not the same thing. And, and I've had to spend a whole lot of time understanding how this circle went into effect like this. They have not yet proven to your board, not my business, 'cause I'm Historic District, but they have not yet proven to your board they can build this. Because what they've shown, not under an approval not required, but under a definitive plan, was that they would cover up something in the historic district. They have to come to us for that. And unfortunately, what happens in historic districts all over the state, and poor Mr. Costello was like, please do not put me in this situation, is the moment they bring in the first bucket load of dirt, we file something with the Land Use Board of Appeals and we say, stop, right now, don't put a single piece of dirt on that structure. And then the town is spending money and tying this up in legal affairs for years and years and years, until we find out, how big of a fountain do you need to be before you're an architectural, what do they call it, landscape architecture? Well, the fountain is, and nobody, nobody disputes, for instance, if this stockade fence were even one inch over the line within the historic district, they'd have to come to us to have permission to build their fence. If I wanna put an arbor on my property, I have to come to us and then not vote on myself to put an arbor on my property, 'cause it can be seen.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, 'cause we, we discussed not the fountain in specific, but the historic district and there, I think we're gonna have to agree to disagree. But what I'd like is, what was the opinion of our town council? 'Cause that's going to sway my vote if we vote tonight or whenever the most.
Well, I hate to speak for him, but, um, you just said agree to disagree, and that's the way he summarized the hour-plus-long conversation with Mrs. Selby and, um, the other member. He said, we basically agreed to disagree, 'cause they have a certain position and he doesn't necessarily agree with it.
We agreed to disagree about the roadway versus a driveway. He did not make that statement about the fountain.
Please. You need to direct your questions to the board.
I just wanna give an, so basically he, it was very clear to me, Pat Costello, I mean, he's spent a lot of time on this already. Um, he said the fountain is a moot point, the planning board can do a full build exercise, it's in your discretion of how to make a decision. The full build exercise doesn't create jurisdiction, and the planning board approved plan is what determines jurisdiction. So, I mean, he, he just, I mean, we spent a fair amount of time discussing it, and he just does not think there's any problem with the planning board if they proceeded with a waiver plan or the other way. So he basically does not agree with the Historic District Commission. And that's it. He's not even convinced that, that a fountain would, that fountain itself would be a landscape feature, but he admitted he did not fully study that. But he doesn't think it's triggered because it's not gonna be disturbed under this. And if the planning board is comfortable with the exercise, I mean, you get to decide the exercise. So it's your discretion.
Okay, and if I may ask one question, Mr. Buckley. The current lot line is, I believe, to the right of where it states Lot 1B.
That's right, yes.
So everything from that line to the left is owned by Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
And it is not part of the historical district?
It is part of, that Lot 1B lies within the historic district.
Okay, okay.
But historic governs structures.
Right, and the, the question was the structure.
So I would like to address a couple of things. First, the, the last part of what Paige said is correct. We, we agree, and Pat and I are both attorneys, so we sort of were driving Sean nuts with this. We agree that this is a mental exercise, right? This is, this is a, so what would happen if, and it is correct. See, see Paige is coming to the end of, well, what's effectively going to happen here? If, in fact, this board in any way it decides, it reasonably decides, that they could prove an as-of-right subdivision. If this board decides, okay, we are satisfied that you proved that, let's talk about waivers and what's best for the community, because we have to let you build something nobody wants. Let's talk about what would be better, right? And that's when we get into the arborvita and the stockade fences and all that good stuff. That's fine. What he's saying is, if in fact this board said, prove it, build it, then it's no longer an intellectual conversation. Then the question of whether the fountain would stop it would be at issue. And he is not giving an opinion on whether the fountain is a qualifying piece of landscape architecture because he's never seen it. Because no one has taken photos, no one has shown him what it is. He has never been on the site to actually see what that looks like. He hasn't seen whether you can see it from a sidewalk. So we went through the list of questions. Can you see it, all of that stuff?
Is that, I don't mean to interrupt, is that the criteria, that you can see it?
Yeah, part of the criteria for any structure is that it can be seen from a public way in the historic district. And you can't count trees as not being able to see it. It can't be something you can remove.
I mean, we can get into the dis, dis debate all night, but I've been on site and I can't see it from a public way.
I can see it, and we've taken photos from public ways. So it is visible, it's just not, you know, it's not a huge fountain bubbling up, which is why you're not seeing it.
I think, here's, we understand the position of the historic district and we respect it. I don't think we need to rehash this like we did at our last meeting. We know their position, we know where town council has weighed in. Um, I think we should move the discussion on.
Okay.
Because while we appreciate that you're an attorney and you're representing the historic district, we have town council and that's who we have to take.
And we have town council. And he actually said, now I'm sitting here between two of my different boards who both have a problem and both have an issue, and both of them legitimately have a question that can only be answered if we took it to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
If, if, well, and that's, that's right, and, and you said something in the beginning that I, I will be honest, was very off-putting. It's like we could end up spending money on attorneys.
And we don't want to.
But here's the thing, we don't want to either.
Right.
And, and we're, we are making a decision based on the, the rules that we have to follow. If this, if you folks opt to do that, then that opt, that decision to make, to spend town dollars on a legal or whatever you wanna call it situation, that will be on the historical, that will not be on the planning board.
Well.
And it, you can debate it and disagree, but that's my personal opinion. So, you know, we, we've all been served at our home before, so we've been there.
And, and we're not.
If that's what you folks wanna do, but that came across very off-putting and very, can you please let me finish? That came across very off-putting and very threatening, which from a fellow board member in town is disappointing to see.
Okay, I hear you and I understand that it came across that way. I apologize if you took it that way. What I am saying is, we are both in need of understanding what the rules are. And so far in these many months of many versions of this plan coming forward, what we have been told is, this has nothing to do with the Historic District Commission. And that is actually not true. And so what I am trying to make sure is that the historic district doesn't get put in a position where we say, this is our only choice because we weren't heard. So what I'm asking is that we be heard.
You have been heard. You're, the, the other gentleman spoke at the last meeting, he actually went very aggressively after Mr. Buckley. You're being heard at this meeting. We understand your position. We don't have to spend thirty minutes discussing it, we respect it, we may not agree with it. But, you know, we've gotten the, you know, from Pat Costello, from the message from Paige, and we, you know, we appreciate you can disagree with that and say you heard differently. But I, I think from this perspective, Ron, we've.
And as long as no other board members have any questions, then I'm going to leave that. And then we'll go back and talk to Pat and figure out what we need to do at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovely, did you have your hand up or?
Well, uh, this is subdivision control, so really the boards that matter in subdivision control, planning board and the board of health, as you know. So we would disagree that the fountain is subject to the historic district bylaw as drafted, and we've offered a solution that saves and protects it. The owner, Mr. Hunt, said that if this goes down and the waivers are granted and 1B is conveyed to him, he plans to restore it and run water to it. So we, we've offered a solution, so, uh, and also I've never heard of the Massachusetts Land Use Board of Appeals. Um, I don't think we have one, but.
That's okay, let's not go there.
But I appreciate, you know, Mr. Hunt's willingness, 'cause right now it's just sitting dormant. So from both a historical and a planning board and a town resident perspective, I think it would, not that I can see the fountain, but agree to disagree. It'll be nice to have it running again.
No, agreed. And from the original plan that came in, and this may or may not be a gray area that was just discussed, they did meet the criteria.
Yep.
What they're presenting here is a much-improved, very modified, a lot of concessions made. Mr. Hunt ends up with no issues with the septic system, a larger parcel of land, a fountain on it, six and eight orchard place, end up with parking, shed relocation. The road is gonna be completely taken care of by the condo association, I.
And the, it's gonna be repaired as part of the development?
Fully restored.
And then maintained?
I don't see a problem, honestly, I do not see a problem.
I have a question just for the, um, record about the six to eight, um, orchard place parking spaces. Are they, are you guys here, is anyone from six to eight here? No? 'Cause I just would hesitate, I mean, I don't know.
I, I would hesitate.
Hesitate to take away four spaces?
Oh, no, 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 I wasn't gonna go there.
You know, and then making a parallel, I wouldn't wanna parallel, is that what you guys are talking about, like, parallel parking?
No, it would be pulling in this way, I believe, side by side.
You can get two spots, there is, just correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, how deep is that, nineteen?
Like, they would go in this way, Paige, one, two, side by side.
So if it's, right, if it's eighteen feet wide, you split it in half, you get two eight-foot parking spots, which is a standard parking spot. By the eighteen-foot deep, half of this becomes grass, half of it stays as parking, and then the access would come in off of Orchard Place. I think that is far better than having it accessed the way it's shown.
Where's the shed going up?
The shed can still stay right there, Gary.
I think it would have to move.
You're saying reducing the amount to.
Can you draw the picture?
Reducing the amount to, to two spaces rather than four?
Right, Bill, can you do anything quickly to modify?
But I also, you know, part of me, I want, before this gets finalized, I want the owners of six and eight to weigh in with what they preferred. I, I personally don't like this one, but they may like it.
In terms of the restricting others from using that parking, I think signage and the documents would have to, um, address not only not parking there, but they're really not supposed to park on the hammerhead, because that's for a public safety turnaround. And, and those may have to be, whether it's, um, paint on the ground and signs, but clearly called out in the documents. That's like, that's a fire laying over there.
So what I was referring to, I'll just go up and draw on the map, make it easy.
Where would the shed go, Ron?
The shed could stay right where it is, Tracy. If they had access that came in like this, this became two parking spaces divided in the middle here. It should go back to be grass. And.
How do you get out?
Back out.
Yeah, but how?
You have to shuffle vehicles.
Okay, that's why you're the engineer.
Well, you know, you could back out, you're right, it just would be, I think it would be awkward.
It would be a tight back out.
I didn't think about that.
I mean, I'd like to think that maybe there's a way to, I mean, with signage or some, I mean, again, I, you would hope that good neighbors, they, I mean, I know things have gotten crazy in the world and everybody's fighting and you see that on TikTok all the time, but hopefully it doesn't end up like that, you know? Or maybe I see that.
I'll have to check it out.
All the neighbors fighting, but, um, you know, I, again, I would, and I don't, they're not here to say, but I would just think four spaces over two.
I think honestly, I don't think it's, I think we're fine either way. I think it'd be their decision, in my, my.
Yeah, and if four to, six to eight wanted it a different way, I think we'd all agree that whatever they want, that's safe and reasonable is fine.
Right.
Yeah. I just would hate to take away parking. It's probably desperately needed.
Right. You know what? If you want to, because I'm, you know, I'm probably, if we met with them, they, they're probably not even sure what they want. You know what I mean? Because, I mean, I look at plans all day, so I can halfway visualize what's going to happen. But a lot of people can look, look at the plan and know, really know what they're looking at. Um, so, perhaps a condition that says, because really, you're approving the road. This is not the road. This would be parking off the side of the road. So, perhaps a condition, Paige could come up with the wording, or Gabby, that says that we will supply no more than four spaces in this general location to be, you know, it could be modified. If, they might love this, but it could be modified that. And I think at that, the point will probably come when it's be, it's built, or the road is at gravel, or it's at, you know, at the gravel point. Now, they'd be able to go out there and go, all right, yeah, I can pull in there. Okay. Or, maybe they would like what Ron described. Or maybe they would want angle parking, and they wouldn't mind backing out and pulling it to the hammerhead and pulling out. You know, I don't know. But, you know, as long as they're in that same general area, I mean, I don't think Jeff will have written the condo docs by that time because we're only going to be at gravel. We won't even have a building permit. Um, and I think that would allow you and us some flexibility and the neighbors on how to put it there. So, no less than two, but no more than four in that general area.
And just to, just to clarify, my understanding is that the shed and those spaces are really all related to eight Orchard Place, which is the, uh, unit further, closest to this project, and that six parks on the other side.
Six has their own parking, I do believe, yes.
So, this would be the Samson's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Two would...
Oh, okay. So, that could change things.
I stand corrected.
I was thinking that was all their parking.
Yeah. No, it's actually, if you look at the, um, lot plan, there's a, there's a little cut-in right there.
Oh, yeah, right there.
And that's a garage in the back.
Right.
Oh, so that's a driveway?
Yeah, it kind of goes a lot to side. We don't, we didn't go all the way.
So, but should we keep it general to six to eight, though, for the condition, just in case? Or do we restrict it to eight?
No, I would do it, eight is the one right now that will be losing the parking spots.
Even though they're...
Does six lose any? Joe, did you make any commitments to six?
Um, no, I, I had met with, uh, Ellen, and then, uh, Gene was at the meeting, Gene Cameron. Um, but mostly it was to show Ellen what I was proposing in terms of the shed and just, once again, it was, this is what I'm proposing. If you guys have any ideas. They didn't have anything in specific, but, um, it was generally to show where I could relocate the spaces and the shed.
Yeah. And again, so the Cameron, the, excuse me, the Samsons are not losing anything.
No, bringing them to what they currently have is two deeded spaces.
Yep.
And then the, the shed just...
Oh, I mean, I think I'm talking about the Camerons. The Camerons are not being... Okay, okay.
I think we can get something like that in writing, that eventually it would be settled mutually agreeable in that same area.
No less than two, no more than four.
Right.
Right, from the time being.
Yep.
I think we can get that in writing. I'd like to move this along. We'd beat this to death.
I would as well.
Yeah, I guess so.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, motion to approve?
With conditions?
With conditions as stated.
All right. So, let me go through a few of them. Gabby, can you help out if you have? I've just been writing through. So, I just made note of the six-foot stockade fence along 18 Baker, and the street trees would be substituted. Um, and then the arbor vida's would be planted along the, um, six foot on center, six feet tall, instead of the street trees, and that would be along, whatever that is, what is that, the northwest property line? Limbing of trees on the right side of Orchard Place, a rip rap swale. Um, the condo, the new house owners would have to handle the maintenance of Orchard Place, um, including snow plowing. Uh, the condo is going to be responsible for maintaining those trees. Oh, let me move that back up there.
Hey, Paige, did you get that, that there'll be, if the natural vegetation in the back left corner is taken down for any reason, arbor vida's will be prolanted there?
That's later.
Okay.
Hold on. I'm going in order of how it's said. That's okay. Um, so then we're back to maintaining the trees and the performance.
Yeah, surety for...
Surety, yeah, surety for two years. I got that. And then, uh, they're going to move the septic to 13-foot offset, replace any trees over four inches, um, with screening shrubs. There's going to be a restrictive covenant that requires that if the, whatever, what's that corner that, um, is going to be undisturbed?
The northeast.
Northeast corner is cleared, then the owners of the condos must, um, continue the arbor vida screening, consistent with what's out there now, or would be out, put out there.
Up to the stockade fence.
Up to stockade.
Or the end of the property, how we want to work.
Okay. Um, I do...
Well, could we, could we specify the six-foot arbor vida, six feet on center for consistency there?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Um, I had a note here about no parking signs, but then I...
In size slash painting.
Because we're going to need something. Well, painting is lame. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I think we need, we need two signs, though. We need the hammerhead.
Hammerhead and the others.
And the, you know, whatever happens with the two to four parking spaces for eight.
So, it combination...
I'm crazy about the signs. I'm sorry. I don't want signs on my front yard either.
No?
No. Leave those on commercials. They look like hell. No, thank you.
Well, you know...
You could do it elegantly.
Well, hold on one second. Maybe if, if it's the parking spaces of eight, we're leading, we're leaving how they're situated and how many there are to the owners. I would leave what type of signage they would prefer to the owners.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I agree.
It's a deeded situation. Impossible.
Um, all right. So, I won't say anything about, well, we need some sort of, we might need signs on the hammerhead. That's kind of a note, like we...
The hammerhead's fine because it's not backing up, you know, it's going to be the arbor vida's. I think, I think that's fine. But I just, the parking spaces, it's more residential than nature.
And then the last one I had there is about supply no fewer than two spaces, no more than four spaces, and it's in the general location shown on the plan, um, at the, um, as agreed by eight Orchard Place. Something more elegant than that. But, and Gabby, did you?
Anything about the shed? Do we have to say anything about the shed?
Um...
That's kind of to be...
Well, same thing, right? Because they're going to also, you'd allow them to move the shed too, right?
A parking space in the shed, I think, should be at the discretion.
Mutual agreement.
Yeah.
Shed, okay.
Can you move the shed?
Okay. One thing that, um, Ellen brought up, and I don't know if it's in our purview, is they're having trouble getting the trash truck down there. Is there anything we need to do around that? Is there anything we can do?
I think this project is going to make it easier to get a trash truck.
The reconstruction of the road, the road is going to be widened a bit.
And it's going to be fixed.
And all of the limbs, yep.
Okay.
That are going to be restrictive. The trash truck is going to be cleared for fire.
Okay. I just remember that was of concern to her.
Are there any other conditions?
No.
And then you should also make a statement as to why you're approving the waivers. Like, you know, why you're choosing to grant waivers. I mean, it's a general statement, but, you know, as opposed to requiring the full build.
Great. Well, the reason for require, um, granting the waivers as requested, we feel as a board creates a minimal impact on the community and zero impact on the town because it will no longer be considered a road to be accepted by the town and maintained by the town. Therefore, it, there is a benefit to be had.
I have a question on that. So, is Orchard Place forever always a private way?
I'm adding that. I just added that in.
Okay, okay.
To make sure, once Ron said that, I was like, no, we might want to...
In perpetuity. Okay. I just want to make sure of that.
So, basically, you feel that it creates minimal impact on the community with no impact on the town, and, um, and why don't, and, and what are your thoughts about the full build? I mean, it's...
Well, the full build would be wholly inappropriate in this setting, um, and in particular to, uh, to Mr. Hunt. The, the media partners would be the most affected parties without question, and, uh...
Three of us. I could, I could see five properties being dramatically affected if they were the full build.
Yes. And there would be a lot more, there'd be a lot less impervious surface, which isn't good.
Right. The full build, you end up with a giant cul-de-sac.
Right.
Wider road, sidewalks, lights.
That was me channeling John Rhodes for drainage.
It's a major impact on the community, on the neighbors.
On the neighbors.
Okay. Do you have to vote on the waivers and the decision?
Okay. Motion to approve the waivers as described and read into the record?
And to...
As estimated.
As estimated. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you got to do the plan.
Motion to approve the plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing our 12 new requests.
Next year?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, next week?
Yeah, next week. Adern.
Motion to adjourn?
Not tomorrow.
Any seconds?
All those in favor?
Aye.